Let's resume. Okay, after that discussion, item 11A. A motion to approve the attached course credit request.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Basil, second by Mr. Rathke. Comments or questions? Seeing none, Mr. Basil.
Mr. Rathke.
Yes.
Mr. Speed. I can hear you if you shout it.
Yes.
Ms. Fadowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
And Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Well, we have, what the problem is, there was four, there was four on. One, two, three, four, no one else could speak.
But if you had gone in order, you wouldn't have been trying to impress by surprise. Item 12, personnel approvals. Don't forget, item C1 was administration, and that was Casey Blankenbiller building a ground supervisor for the district at $78,000 effective September 23rd, replacing Ken Smith.
I make a motion for C1 to three, ah, four.
Second.
Tell me, we have to go 12A and B?
Yeah.
So amend your motion to...
Okay, I'm sorry, I'll amend my motion for 12A through C.
C5.
How about D?
Okay, D.
D2, right? Or B. That was amended.
Yes.
Sorry.
How about all the self-on approved, self approvals, I make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fadowski, second by Mr. Wolf, to approve all the personnel approvals. Comments or questions?
I just had a question regarding stipends in the past. We were making sure that they were being prorated depending on when they're being approved. Is that the case here as well?
We are not approving anyone that has been receiving any pay. Well, I shouldn't say that. Is there something on here with regards to, um, no.
No, I think he means that the $78,000 annual salary will be appropriated based on the starting point.
Right.
Right, so if I see something here for $2,400, that's the prorated amount?
Correct, yes.
With respect to item C1A will be prorated, that annual salary will be prorated.
Yes.
Have you questions?
Mrs. Torsche, I have a couple of questions about 12B, or which is now, it's the professional, without going into the names, but we have people taking leave of absence. Now, the policy states that personal days can be taken, or I'm sorry, leave of absence for vacations, which at least two of these seem to be, requests may be submitted every fifth year. Are we, is anybody monitoring that?
I have been since I'm on board, and these two requests have not been within the past, within that five year. They're brand new.
So, and they are for vacations or personal?
They are for personal, yes. And they, the policy that applies to this, they fall within that policy.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions?
I have a question about Mr. Blankenbiller. Is this appropriate time to ask, when does he start and what is his background?
His background is doing supervisory of buildings and grounds, vast experience working with the school district for two and a half years, along with owning his own build, business, has extensive HVAC experience, as well as many other certification areas, refrigerant, which is a big one, and I'm sure I'm missing a whole lot as I don't have his resume in front of me, but he has many, if not more of the, or similar experiences as to Ken Smith, yes. And his availability will be at some point this week. I just wasn't able to pinpoint an exact day, but I knew that he would be able to jump on board with us.
Can you say which school district he's coming from?
Yes, he was working in the Wilson School District, yes.
Let me have you, Mr. Blankenbiller, would you come to the microphone, please?
Put him on the spot. Nothing like...
You gotta push the button to turn it on.
The gray one, I guess there is only one there.
Yeah, the only one.
There you go.
Any board members have any questions for Mr. Blankenbiller about his experience, where he came from?
He was with Wilson for two and a half years.
I was with Wilson, I started with Wilson January 1st of 2012. I left May of 2014, prior to that. Started a mechanical company in my parents' home, out of high school, part-time in the office as the business grew, I went into trades, I was in the truck for 11, 12 years. Business grew, my father needed help in the office, brought me in the office for about two years. I bought the business from my parents in 2002. My father retired in 2003, opportunity came up to go to Wilson, sold my business, I handshake it going to Wilson with some guarantees, and that fell for, so...
Are you familiar with the controls? I think it's, what is it, your controls here? Excellent.
We had, the training system that you have here, we have an older system, we had two of them at Wilson, two of our schools, we had another system, and the remaining nine facilities. And right when I left, we were in the process of doing about a $300,000 upgrade, so that was actually about a $1.6 million upgrade to mechanicals over five facilities, to chillers, controls, you know, and actually, it was part of an eight and a half million dollar performance contract that was submitted by a contractor, and then I had to go through and get priorities for the school board, made it up in the four phases over an eight-year plan.
What's the biggest challenge you see coming into our system that you'll have to master?
I'm looking forward to it. I'm definitely a hands-on guy, I would never ask anybody to do something, I would do myself. So, I've done everything from dig the ditch to paint the walls.
Welcome on board, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for having me.
Mr. Small suggested when you send out the reserve study electronically to Mr. Smith, send it to Mr. Blankenbiller to, you know, give you a lot of insight into what you're gonna find here.
I can only imagine. Wilson was in some pretty bad shape, so I'm not sure.
Do you feel there isn't anything here that you can't?
No.
Get the resources together to resolve it.
Thank you, Mr. Blankenbiller. Other comments or questions on any of the personnel items? Seeing none, Mr. Basil?
Mr. Rathke? Mr. Speed? Yes. Ms. Fadowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty? I'm sorry, Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Item 13, and item 13, we had a couple edits, so we've got the motion to approve the agreement for the substitute healthcare staffing, a motion to approve the agreement for nursing services, and a motion to approve the E-signature for grant applications.
I'll take the motion to approve those three things.
Second. Motion by Mr. Fadowski, second by Mr. Wolf. Comments or questions?
I have a question about the healthcare staffing. Mr. Subers, have you had a chance to look at this?
I have not, I have not had the opportunity, I have not had that opportunity. You can approve it, receive the subject to solicitor review.
Okay.
This is only for us to go to this service if we cannot get a substitute nurse that's on our substitute list. And this was the direction that the board had recommended to me in the spring, when I had proposed hiring another nurse that would be floating at 180 days throughout the year, not coming in at the, on the collective bargaining room, but something to be able to support the necessity. We have situations right now where there are nurses out of the district, and I have two, and I don't have enough subs. We have run ads, we repeatedly, twice we have, and we're not getting the amount of coverage. So, that was why I went to look at the agencies to be able to provide those subservices. We would only be using them on call, it would not be every single day, it's only as needed when we need coverage within our buildings.
I don't disagree with the need or with the direction that you followed. I'm 100% agreement with that. I guess my question was one of whether or not this type of contract should be brought before a committee of some kind prior to execution. I don't know in terms of the rates that are on there, are those competitive, non-competitive? And then, just as I saw, as I read the contract, a couple of things just sort of stuck out to me, that this, it's a automatic renewable contract, as opposed to something that terminates at the end of one year, or that they have to provide us with notice of, that it's going to renew. Some contracts that automatically renew, they have a provision says, you know, at least 90 days prior to renewal, so-and-so must notify the district that, you know, so that there's some sort of queue that happens. So I'm not proposing any changes to this, other than, you know, perhaps the solicitor ought to look at it, and that was my particular concern with an automatically renewed contract, is whether or not we have an opportunity yet to amend that, to either terminate in a year, and then we have, then as a board, or as administration, you get to renew it as you see fit? Or we need to have some sort of provision that they provide you with some notice?
I haven't reviewed it, but just looking quickly at the term provision, it does, it's a one-year term that automatically renews, but the next provision provides either party at any time may cancel this agreement with or without cause by giving the, giving 30 days prior to notice of the other party.
Yeah, I mean, there's a ripcord provision, I call that a ripcord provision, and that's fine, I just, I think, I don't know, we talked about this about a month ago or so, about the board just being aware of the different contracts that are coming up that we're obligated to honor, and just having some other cue in there that this, this would come up on any basis for, I don't know whether it rises to the board level or not, you know, that's up for the board discussion, I'm just asking the question.
This, well, this would be the first time that we're, that I'm requesting that we go into an agreement with them, primarily because I do have a situation where I have two nurses that are going to be out of our district on Friday, and I have no coverage. So, but in investigating this, this was the direction that I went, and I know that, why I'm missing school district contracts with them, and my understanding was that I did not have to renew this each year, but I would bring it to the board's level to let you know that we were doing that each year.
Well, one simple provision or revision would be just to make it for a one-year term, from the 13th day of August 2014 to the 12th day of August 2015, and just change the term of the agreement to that, I don't, I don't know.
If you look at the red, quick, quick one. I'm just asking the question, I don't know what the rest of the board's opinion is on that. I just, for me, it would just seem, we just discussed this with the transition house and some of these other contracts, that we wanted to make sure that we were aware that these things were coming up, and then we had an opportunity to think about it, or at least be notified of it.
I agree.
And if they kick in again, that's fine, I mean, if the board doesn't want to do anything, but it's, I think it's just more about everybody having this on their tickler file and being aware of it.
Well, this comes back to, we'll discuss it at the Friday's meeting about having a board calendar, so that we know that this month these things expire or need to be renewed or whatever.
So, I don't know whether we want to approve this, or we want to make an amendment to change it.
Yeah, I think what Andy's saying is that he wants the, he wants the things to come up to us to actually expire, so it does trigger...
Yeah, the only question is, my, if I heard you correctly, you need these people Friday?
I do need to have nurses for Friday.
I could amend my motion pending solicitor review.
Well, or when the alternative is reviewed, to, I mean, we can add that, but you can approve it for a one-year term, and I think that the, Mr. Torsche, do you have any, I don't think they'd have a problem with that, one-year term.
I don't think so either.
Okay, so that, that would address the initial concern, and then I, we can, you know, certainly, if you do the other terms, I just, glancing through the headings, there is indemnification appropriate, there's confidentiality provisions, but I can review it further, but I think if we're going to adjust a major term, I mean, a major term of the contract, such as the term of the contract, you know, the length of the contract, I would suggest that that be made part of the board motion, and then the, you know, legalese of the contract be subject to review by the district solicitor and district superintendent.
Okay, one other question. Mr. Small, did you look at the indemnifications, and just to, just to see that the insurance limits and everything else met our standard? I don't know whether that was done in terms of the contract or not. It was like $1 million and $3 million, and I just wasn't sure whether that complied with what we have as a policy for, you know, professionals working in the buildings.
I'll review that to make sure, I prefer to see their insurance certificate with us as named, to make sure.
Well, yeah, clearly want them to name us as additional insurance on their policies, but...
That's just a standard form.
Right, I just wasn't sure whether, also take a look at whether or not the limits meet our requirements, because if the limits don't need to adjust them, then that's something else that needs to be...
The limits are fine, but I prefer to see the certificate with us down in the lower left-hand corner.
As a named additional term.
All right, Mr. Basil, before you call the board, I shut the lights off. I think yours is back on.
Okay, so the motion was approved, 13A through C, Ms. Fadowski, and was the, who seconded it? Mr. Wolf?
Mr. Subers, are we doing that with your final approval?
If it makes people feel better, I can amend it, or I can let it stay as it was. Do you want me to amend it to pending solicitor review?
Obviously, we can terminate this thing in 30 days if we wanted to. I'm not making a big, I just want to make sure that going forward, that we have these things, and I would like him to review it after the fact, I don't think the vote needs to be continued on it.
Okay, then I'll lead my motion as well.
Any other comments, questions? Okay. Mr. Rathke, you're up again.
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Ms. Fadowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 14, policy, for those that weren't at the policy meeting, item 3, under second readings, the revision of policy 902 for public participation, that's being withdrawn. Mrs. Torsche, in reviewing the policy, realized that the original one was so old that the provisions cited are out of date, so that has to be fixed. And then, the policy itself on policies is gonna need to be revised, because it talks, it calls for a first reading, a second reading, and a vote, but we also need 30 days from the first reading to the vote. So we're gonna have to have a first reading, a second reading, and then a vote at the subsequent meeting. So that will have to be changed, the way the policy's working.
Mr. Martino, what we typically, I think what we did in the past, Sandy, maybe you can correct me, was didn't we just put these things on for the voting meetings, the first readings, the second readings? So we had the 30 days that passed.
We did first reading, another first reading, a second reading, and then a vote.
Which was, and I asked, I asked Mrs. Kramer, why we had two first readings, and that was only so that we would have that provision of 30 days, so instead of having a first reading, first reading, we're just gonna change it to first reading, second reading, and then a subsequent meeting of vote. But anyway...
So you're gonna be doing those at the committee of the whole meetings? Those votes?
No, we're gonna ask that the policy committee submit their first one for the voting meeting, so the second reading would be at the committee of the hall, and then the third meeting would be the voting meeting to approve it. So for tonight, we're at the second reading of two policies, 801 on the video/audio monitoring of school buses, and the second reading for policy 005, organization.
You need a motion? Yes, I'm like, motion for 14, wanted to...
Motion by Mr. Wolf. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fadowski. Comments or questions?
Just make observation, at the policy committee meeting, I'm just curious, are all the policies being reviewed by the solicitor before they come up before the board?
Yes, they're set.
Just asking.
I would just like to remind the board, to caution the board about rushing into an audio/video policy on school buses, due to, like the terms for children's privacy.
Right, we're not voting.
Apparently not.
No, we're not voting.
No, not tonight.
That's why I didn't understand the motion.
Yeah, so there's no motion for second reading?
Right.
Only if we're voting then.
Okay, and just also a reminder that the only change on the organization is that the board president will be an ex officio member of all committees with no voting privileges. Other comments or questions on policies? Is there anything on transportation, Mrs. Torsche?
No, nothing.
Under old business, music, Mr. Basil?
Right, so if anyone recalls last rain, we had discussed trying to implement an after-school music program with the help of some outside sources, that went sideways, and I think it was a good program to offer the school district, I think it afforded the children of this school district and this community, quite frankly, a heck of an opportunity, and I was curious as to whether or not the board would be interested in pursuing that, again, and try to put that in place, so that it's there for the kids of this community.
Comments or questions?
I certainly, you know, I certainly think it would, it's worthwhile, you know, the concern I have is how that whole thing turned out. Do you really think we're gonna get someone, again, before we have a budget in place, that's gonna come forward with a, with an after-school program, with what happened to the gentleman, who was gracious enough to come and make a presentation, and unfortunately, you know, people outside the district, or those in this district, made it very difficult for that, you know, that man, and he lost his job because of it. So I'm wondering, is, really, is it, is it gonna be anyone out there that's gonna step up and even, you know, provide something for us? If it's, say, the music program continues as is, and it just augments it, I think that's great. I think the past history will make it difficult to find somebody to actually do that, but I think it's worth the effort.
I was thinking along the same lines as Mr. Wolf, and did you have any ideas of maybe where to look, but again, I would have the same concern that Mr. Wolf.
I mean, I had been approached, and so that's the reason why I brought it up, and I didn't want to spend a lot of time and effort on it like we did the last time around, with the same type of results, so before moving forward, I just wanted to make sure that it was blessed by the board to kind of pursue this and try to develop it, maybe it comes to nothing, but if there's some sort of hope to have an after-school program, then I think it's a worthwhile attempt.
Are you, are you asking us after-school program, or replacement for the music program at Homicide?
This is an after-school program, I mean, which is similar to what was being offered before, it was an after-school program, it would not take place during the day, it would take place after-school hours. But my intent here isn't, I'm not even thinking about budget and cuts and all that kind of stuff, I'm thinking about a program that will hopefully augment the program that we have here.
So, will it be clear on what that, I wasn't sure what direction we're going to go?
No, no, I'm not looking at alternatives, you know, in terms of our current program, this is, this is strict, I just want everyone to think of this as strictly as an after-school program, just like a sports program or anything else, and if we can put it in place, and that's something that this community is gonna support, hallelujah. If the community doesn't want to support it, then, you know, it's over with, but I have to, I wanted to get the blessing of the board on this before I decided to spend any time on it, otherwise, if the board's not behind it, there's no point in me spending any time working on it.
If I remember correctly, I mean, that program is gonna offer stuff we don't or can't offer, so it would enhance the music program. How would it be funded? Would it be self-funded?
Yes.
Did you have, have you...
Can you elaborate on that?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Speed.
I'd be interested in you researching that, and I'd be grateful.
I would too. Have him come and make a presentation, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Moving on to new business, there's a item on here about the Pennsylvania School Board Association officer voting process, and it had been sent out to all the board members, there was some confusion, apparently we were supposed to discuss it and submit a vote as a board, and at least one member signed in and voted on their own. Mr. Kurtz is the PSBA rep, and he was supposed to contact them Friday to determine if they could void that vote and give us the opportunity to vote again as a board, and he's not here tonight, so I will try and contact him tomorrow to find out what he found out, because I don't know at this point. Pennsylvania School Board Association is also offering a negotiations workshop, Mr. Rathke, did you want to discuss that?
I think we've gotten, I'm sure everybody here has gotten emails about that upcoming workshop. Two different pieces to it, there's six online classes available that are, I believe, my memory serves, $3 apiece, and then there's a Saturday coming up in November that they're going to have an onsite piece of this, where I guess you collaborate with other sites across the state, where you actually do a mock negotiations piece there. Reason I bring it up is we do have three contracts coming up this year, so I'm not sure that's something that a couple of us are gonna pursue or not, or take these classes, but obviously it does cost them money, so I guess my goal here is to see if the board would approve it, I'm not sure if we'd actually want to actually take the classes, or have them, or just want to do it, or do the whole thing, or just strictly do the classes and maybe skip the workshop, or vice versa, but I wanted to bring it, and have a discussion on that, and see what they want to go with.
My opinion, for what it's worth, is that I think the negotiations committee should consider attending, and for those that have not actually done negotiations before, I think doing mock negotiations cannot hurt, which is my opinion.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's a good idea.
So do we need a motion to approve the funds, or is that not...
I think we have funds set aside for continuing education for board members, so that's part of our budget.
Besides, we couldn't approve the funds, because we don't have anyone to go yet.
This is true, this is true, okay.
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as...
Can we approve for a maximum of three?
Well, as Mr. Basil just said, the money's already set aside, but I believe there are four people on the negotiations committee, aren't there?
Yeah, four.
Yeah, so I thought, so if I were you, I'd decide amongst yourselves, and you're all of you, one or ten?
Or others, I mean, board member...
Or others, if you want to.
I don't think we have to prove that.
I'd be willing to do it. Plus, just in general, just in general, these paths and courses, I mean, they're
and courses, I mean, any money on the board can take any path of course they want. We have money set aside in the budget for that. It helps you be a better board member. So, whether it's negotiations, or it's, you know, finance, or something, it doesn't matter what it is, you know, those are there for our benefit, so that, you know, you're more educated and understand the resources that are available to you to make the decisions.
What's the approval process? Will it come on ourselves then for dispersing that?
My recollection in the past was we just signed up for the stuff that you wanted to take, whether it was a continuing education, it was a board education class or president orientation class or whatever it is.
Spend it till it's gone, first come, first served?
Well, the board's been very judicious about that. We haven't had a lot of people taking all of these things, but it's there for-
You know what that budget item is?
I don't, Mr. Small, do you know how much is in there?
Could it be wiped out if too many people-
No, I don't think it's going to be wiped out.
No, what I suggest, very simply, rather than complicating this, whoever wants to go, Mr. Rathkev is the chair of the negotiation committee. Mr. Rathkev is the chair of the negotiation committee. Anybody that wants to attend, let him know. He can make a motion at the next meeting to have that amount of money approved. Does that sound fair?
Yes.
Okay. Before we get to the public with our recess in order, remember if I said it or not, we are having an executive session ahead for this meeting to discuss employment issues and labor relations. So, having announced that-
Just one more, I can't we just make a decision to go with the vote, the pass of a vote that was placed among ourselves, or is that inappropriate to suggest that?
We don't know what it was. I mean, we can-
I thought it was disclosed in the email who was voted for, what the selection was.
Yeah, I probably would have made a mistake, and I sent everybody, the individuals that I looked at, and-
I'm sort of okay with it.
There was two to the four, but there was no, there was no choice. It was, they were running out of votes. So-
But we don't, we don't have to make that decision tonight. As Mr. Basil said, we have it with 30 more days.
Okay, I was just suggesting it would be something we could clean right up.
Mr. Doty's not here. Mr. Kurtz isn't here.
Until the 9th of October. I think it was the 8th of September until the 9th of October was the window of our-
Yeah.
Oh, no, we don't.
You got a couple of-
No, we don't have a meeting.
No, but you can-
Oh, we, I got you. Okay. What? Hi. Well-
Okay, so if we don't have a meeting prior to that, then we would have to, if we don't
go with Mr. Wolf's vote, then we would have to have a special meeting, or somebody would have to call, Sandy would have to call us in Polis, I guess, correct? And we'd have to ride a fight at the October 13th meeting.
Okay. I was okay with Mr. Wolf's decision. Is there anybody, is there anybody objecting to Mr. Wolf's vote? Saying none? Leave it at Mr. Wolf's vote?
Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you for voting.
I don't want it on record that whatever FASPA does that we don't like is your fault.
Any presentations by the public on any issues?
One thing I, one thing I wanted to mention, on Friday, at the football game, we had 160 kids from the elementary, 140 from the elementary, and another 15 from middle school attend the football game to play with the high school. And let me tell you, there was a lot of, a lot of smiles and wide eyes and a lot of pizza and drinks, which were, the drinks were withheld later on because the teachers warned us about what would happen when you feed elementary kids a whole lot of drinks. But they had a great time. It was a big night, obviously. We got ourselves into paper, not for a positive reason necessarily. The lights went out, but at least they mentioned in there that the band entertained the crowd while the lights came back on. But the kids had a great time, thought it was worthwhile to mention. A lot of positive feedback from the people that were there. And they kind of, like I said, the elementary school kids really enjoyed it.
Yeah, very exciting night.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Mr. Tapplin?
Yeah, Barry Tapplin, 290, oh, I'm sorry, 2032 East Main Street, Unit Township, under 16A. Could we not keep that in-house and utilize our music staff that we already have instead of getting out, trying to outsource something here?
I'm not really proposing anything at this time, whether you want to call it outsourcing or something else. This would be a, hopefully, it's a program that's being offered and paid for by parents and students. So, it's not going to be at a district expense, much the same way Amity Athletics or any other extracurricular program outside the school district operates. So, if the organization wants to come in and offer that service and utilize our existing staff, I don't see why there'd be an issue with that.
I'm just thinking it would be a good issue to ours, our music staff, to do the same, same thing and pay them as well, but-
I think if they wanted to do that, Mr. Tapplin, they'd have to throw up a proposal saying exactly what they would provide, what they were charged, et cetera.
Okay. And then, while you're talking about nursing, are you aware about, a few weeks back, I heard a player on the radio that they're trying to approve a bill or something, that they're going to have a school nurse for every thousand students. Are we prepared for that?
That I don't believe is accurate information. The last thing that I received was that we need to have 15, or one nurse per 1,500 students, which also incorporates the Catholic school. And yes, we are prepared for that. We do have five RNs in our district.
Well, that's what they were saying, that they're going to try to decrease that. The way the news was saying, they're going to try to decrease that, so we have more nurses for, it's not going to be that much.
The last communication that I received did not lower that number. It's still maintained at 1,500.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapplin. Other comments by the public? Saying none? Is there a motion to adjourn?